It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, November thirteenth. That the record show that we do have quorum. Commissioner Science being absent. If everyone will please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Enter a body for which the justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, perfect and just.
I'd like to welcome everyone and thank y'all for being here. We don't have any minutes, do we, Dennis?
I'm going to ask that they be paid.
Okay.
Do we table the minutes?
Second, Your Honor.
Moving to second to table minutes, discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Claims, Mr. Carter, those in order.
The claims are all in. They're all in order.
I just want to go, Your Honor.
Second to both, Your Honor.
Moving to second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, is there anyone from out of town that needs to come before the court at this time? In the essence of time. I see we have a couple of lawyers in the back. What line item is that?
There's a cable to measure.
I'm sorry?
Number seven.
Oh, okay.
Discuss approval for trenching and boring on Mesquitas, which is Mr. Science's jurisdiction.
Okay, that's item seven. You want to use the podium and identify yourself for the record, please.
Where's Mesquite at?
It's in the San Isidro area.
I got another one over here.
This is for fiber optic lines?
Yes.
Is that correct?
So, we're taking fiber optic lines to San Isidro on some of the places that we currently don't have fiber optics, and Los Mesquitas is one of the roads that we need to go down to provide fiber optics to the customers that have old copper lines.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the permit.
On second, a motion.
Moving to second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. I will sign that in a few minutes if y'all want to wait, or we can mail it to you either way. Okay. The next one is item, which one?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Oh, and that's on the settlement agreement with D. Wilson Construction.
Yes, sir. I just move that we approve the settlement.
Second to motion.
Okay, moved in second to approve settlement, and I think that is more to approve the payment of the check, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We have the delinquent attorneys, but I don't see them here.
They're already there.
Right on cue.
They're right there, that's why I know.
Come on, I get to the podium.
We're, uh...
They're waiting for you.
Oh, my apologies, I ended up at the annexed building.
Not a problem. This is item twelve, and this is a possible action on the delinquent tax collection report for October seventeenth through September eighteenth.
Morning, Judge Commissioner. Just for the record, Mike O'Connell with Limebarger, Delinquent Tax Attorneys. You should have the report in your package, now try to be as brief as possible. This is our fiscal year collections from, excuse me, October of two thousand seventeen through this past September, and you'll see that on page three of our report, we began by notifying all your delinquent taxpayers of their delinquency. We've mailed quite a few pieces of mail. We've contacted over forty-five hundred of your taxpayers by telephone, and we visited over twelve hundred taxpayers at their homes to try to reach some type of resolution. When it becomes necessary, we do file lawsuits. We filed over a hundred and twenty lawsuits for close to half a million, uh, half a million dollars in taxes owed to the county. We took eighty-eight judgments, and currently we represent the county in seven hundred and thirty lawsuits that represent just over four point five million dollars. On page four, you'll see that sometimes it does become necessary for us to foreclose on some properties. Judge, we've been very careful not to foreclose on your residents that live in their homes. If it's a registered homestead, we really work with those taxpayers to try to reach some type of a payment agreement. The foreclosures that we've gone after, you know, pretty aggressively here this past year, have been either empty lots or abandoned homes. So, it serves two purposes. One, we collect the money that's owed to the county, and two, it also serves the purpose of cleaning up the county and some of these ISO properties. So, you'll see that we conducted some tax sales, and you'll see the results of that tax sales on the top of page four, and we've broken it up as to which were actually paid off and which were actually struck off to the county. And actually have another agenda item on that particular topic, and we'll come back to that. But on the bottom of page four, you'll really see the results of what we do for the county, Judge, and that is collecting delinquent taxes that's owed to the county. And we always benchmark to the prior year. We want to make sure that we're turning over to the county the same amount, the same amount of money we collected the prior year, and if not, trying to exceed that for this year, and we were able to accomplish that. Last year, we did have a great year, and we collected just over three point two million dollars, and this year, we had an even better year, we collected just over three point five million dollars. When I was here a couple of years ago, Judge, just taking over this account, I know that the county asked us to try to pick up our efforts and try to, you know, go, you know, try to act a little bit more aggressively with these non-homestead properties, and that's exactly what we've done, and I think the results speak for themselves. You know, we're increasing the amount of money we collect for the county without displacing your residents from their homes, and I think that's the most important distinction. So, we try to do our job as ethically as possible, as responsible as possible. We treat your taxpayers with the utmost respect. I think everybody knows that they have to pay, they have to pay property taxes, and it's in their benefit to try to pay them sooner rather than later because of the balancing interest. So, we try to work with them, educate them, and try to collect the money as best we can without forcing some of these residents out of their homes. And really, that's what we're going to continue to do, Judge. If you have any questions, we have our work plan on the last page of five. We're going to continue doing what we do, which is calling your taxpayers, visiting your taxpayers in their homes, bringing them to our office, and just try to work with them, you know, try to make enough, you know, sometimes arreglos con ellos, and see if they can, you know, come, you know, we can reach a reasonable payment terms with them.
How much money did you, did you collect that, or that what we had budgeted? How much more money did you?
We normally budget what we collected the prior year, so this, this last year, I believe we had budgeted three point two million dollars, and so we're over by about three hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred thousand, more than what we had budgeted.
That is correct.
I didn't look at it.
Yeah.
And again, could I say?
And I do want to commend you guys. You know, I know I've worked with you very closely, and of course, your office, and like I've said before, we do need people to pay their taxes. However, we want to be as easy with them as we possibly can. The county is not in the business of real estate, of taking houses or properties and selling them, but we are in the business of collecting taxes. So, and y'all have been extremely great about that, working with the people, you know, every chance they have so they can pay, payment plans, whatever, and then at the last resort, then of course, you repo whatever needs to be repo. So, we appreciate that, that y'all do that for the people.
Thank you, Judge Commissioner. Thanks for giving us the opportunity. And again, I just really want to stress that I think everybody in this county knows that they have to pay their taxes, and, you know, it's better that they start paying a little at a time as opposed to just kind of neglecting it, and I think we were accomplishing that.
Yes, I just referred somebody this morning, and they took care of it, and the man was very worried. I said, "Don't worry, go out there and get a payment agreement," which he did right away, so he was very grateful for that, and you guys were willing to work with him.
We'll continue to do that, Commissioner. With your all's brace, we'll continue to do that.
I move that we approve the report. Is we seeing the units?
Second, Your Honor.
Moving to second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is also pertaining to the delinquent attorneys, and that's on the tax resale received November seventh. Mr. Cottle?
Judge Commissioners, this is actually an agenda item that we've had lingering since last year in November of two thousand seventeen, and I want to kind of take my time and talk about this particular tax resale. Once we foreclose on a property, we do one of two things. We put the property up for sale, that's called a tax sale, the very first time we sell a property. And by code, the law requires that we start the bidding at the minimum price, or the less of the appraised value of the property or the amount of taxes owed. Many times, a lot of those properties do not sell the very first time they're put up for sale because no one's willing to pay that high amount, the amount of taxes or the appraised value, because a lot of these properties are really not worth what the appraisal district has them appraised in. If it's an abandoned property and the house has been, you know, destroyed for the most part, the way the appraisal system works is the house is appraised by square footage for that particular area. So, if it's a, you know, a nice warehouse that is not inhabitable, you know, it's upon the taxpayer to go and protest that property value with the appraisal district. Well, obviously, if no one's living there, no one's paying the taxes, there's no one to go protest the property, so you have what's called a false value. You may have a home that's appraised at, you know, sixty-five thousand, when in reality it's probably not worth half of that. So, a lot of these properties get struck off, Judge, and as you know, and as you just stated earlier, the county's not in the business of maintaining real estate, but if we foreclose on a property and we do not sell it at that tax sale, it becomes a property of the county. The county holds it in trust, along with the school district and the city if it's within city limits. So, and what we've been trying to do is trying to speed up the process of how we actually dispose of these properties, because two things happen. Once it becomes your property, gets struck off, obviously, you don't, you don't collect any taxes on the property, and two, you're no longer collecting, you're not assessing future taxes because now it's your property, so it becomes tax exempt. So, it becomes a really problem to hold all this inventory of property, nor do you want to be liable for it. So, we have what's called a tax resale process, and that's, these properties that we sold last November were done through a resale. And the way the resale process works is the law allows us to actually conduct it like a normal auction, where we can take the highest bid. So, you know, the sheriff's office will start at the amount of taxes owed, if no one gives us, let's just say it's thirty thousand, it'll go down to twenty-five, twenty, fifteen, ten, until we finally start getting bids, and then it starts to go back up. And this is, in our opinion, the best way to get rid of properties, you know, through a public sale, because it ensures everybody has a fair opportunity to bid on the properties, and we believe it maximizes the amount of money you get for that particular property. The code also allows us to do a private sale. Anytime the county owes, owns that property, it's been struck off, anyone can come to our office and tender a bid, say, you know, "Hey, I'd like to, you know, buy this property." We shy away from doing private bids, Judge, only because we don't want to be seen as handpicking certain bids, because that requires approval of every taxing entity, unless it's for the full amount. So, let's say we have a property and there's thirty thousand dollars owed in taxes, and it did not sell at the tax foreclosure, and the county's holding that property. If someone comes with a thirty thousand dollar bid, then we can approve it, we can actually sell that property without getting, you know, the county and city's approval and the school's approval, because you're recovering one hundred percent of your taxes. It's when you're not that we need to get everyone's approval. So, that brings me to these particular resales. We had, this was a public sale held last November. We sold, we put up for sale forty properties, thirty-nine actually sold. Out of the thirty-nine, the county had approved most of these properties, twenty-seven of them, or all of them except twenty-seven. And as you may recall, the county did not approve the sale of the twenty-seven in the Campo Velo subdivision in the city of Roma, because the school also had some issues with those particular properties. The school and the city have now since worked it out, so the city has approved the sale of those bids for that particular subdivision, and so has the school. The school last month approved it, so now we're just pending the county's approval, so hopefully we can get these, these properties transferred to the people who bid on them last year at a public sale.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, Mr. Cottle, one of the questions that we also had was that the buyers, Ms. Alina brought that up, that the buyers at the, at the auction or at the sale, that they are also current in their, in their taxes. We don't want to sell properties to someone that's delinquent on their, on their properties. Has that been checked?
Yes, actually, Judge, there's actually a rule in the bidding process, it's actually state law, that if, before you can even register to bid, you have to provide a certificate that's issued by the tax office that shows you're not delinquent.
Okay.
So, now, I can, I can tell this court that sometimes it does happen, because some people will bid, they'll show up, and they'll register under an entity's name, they'll create an entity by which they can purchase these properties, and they may be delinquent on their personal, but we can't prevent that from happening. But for the most part, you know, our representative who conducts these sales has to receive a certificate from the county. Anyone who shows up to buy these properties has to have that certificate in order to register, to show that they're not delinquent on any properties they may own, if they're going to buy them under their personal name.
I believe that was one of the issues. The other issue was that the people that bought these properties, that they, that we ensured that they knew that all of these were flood zone, and they could not build anything on them ever, until it comes out of flood zone.
That is correct, Judge. Actually, we make that very clear at the tax sale. It's in the literature that they're buying as-is, without is, without any warranty, and it's subject to, you know, anything, for example, flooding, and we have made them known. Now, I'll tell you that most of the, those twenty-seven properties in Campo Velo, most of those properties were sold to neighboring property owners, and there's, and some of those, you'll see that even though they're all the same sized lots, some sold for significantly more than others, and that's because they themselves know which lots are subject to be, to flood, and which properties are not really subject to flooding. So, those that flood a little often, those sold for a lot less, and again, then there's some on higher ground, and those sold for a little bit more, and we've spoken to these individuals, and they realize that they're buying, they're buying the lots for different purposes, whether to store something on there, to store animals on there, and at the end of the day, really, it's going to be the city's, because it is within the city limits, the city of Roma's going to have to deal with those issues if they do come up, and they're prepared to do that, and they've actually passed the sale of these.
I noticed on your, on your printouts, it shows amount for district. Is that the county's or the school district?
I think that was the typo, it should say amount for the county, because amount for district's for the school district. I think they used, the amount is the correct amount, but it should be amount for county, because I looked at each individual sheet, and it is, it is correct.
It's for the county.
So, it's just a typo, and I apologize for that, it should have been amount for county.
Any other questions, comments? You know, I personally feel we should go ahead and accept it if nothing else, so that we could put it on the, on the tax rolls and start taxing these people.
There are one question, you said, but to put those, those properties like on a public auction, but it has to be after the, when it comes to the resale, not as the first sale?
They're all, Commissioner, they're actually all sold by public auction. The very first time we foreclose on them, it's done at a public auction. If no one bids on it at that particular time, then it's, it's struck off, which basically means y'all become the owners.
And that's when you can take a lower bid, not at the time of the first auction.
That is correct. We can only take a lower bid the second time. So, a lot of these properties, if you look at the individual sheet, a lot of, you know, most of these in Campo Velo, for example, were struck off back in two thousand sixteen, you know, so it's been a couple of years now that the county's had these properties, and nothing's happening with these properties.
What I'm referring to is those abandoned houses that are, we know that they owe sixty thousand dollars, but I mean, worse, ten thousand. You can't sell right then and there, take the lowest bid? It has to be...
Not at the first sale.
Not the first sale?
Only at the, at the second sale. Now, I want to brief the, I think, I want to get past to this particular issue, and I want to brief the court on what we're doing in the Ithalo County, because I think we'd like to do that here with y'all, but I'll get that, to that one next, so I think it'll speed up the process for y'all. So, again, it's our recommendation that we, that the county approve the sale of these particular, the remaining lots. In addition to the Campo Velo subdivision lots, there was one, one additional sale. A gentleman bid on a property, but after he bid on the property, he could not actually physically locate the property, so he had asked for a refund, and we're in the process of issuing, issuing him a refund, and then he came back and said, "Hey, I found the property after all, I'd like to go ahead and buy the property," stick with, you know, with the sale. So, we also have that particular property in this sale, but that was a part of the same sale from November of two thousand seventeen. So, you'd be approving...
You motion to approve the decision? I move that we approve the refusal.
Next, I can, Your Honor.
Moving to second to approve the resale. Any further discussion? All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. Now, just one last housekeeping matter on this particular process. The way this process works is, is obviously, we're bringing, we conduct the sale, and then once we conduct the sale, we bring the bids to the county, the school, and the city for approval. That process obviously takes a long time, you know, normally it takes about three to four months to get all the approvals done. This particular case took a little longer because of the flooding, and we understand that. But the, the tax code allows us that if a property has been struck off, and the six months right of redemption has already passed, any taxing entity within the property's taxing boundaries can request, can request that the sheriff sell the property with no further approval of any other entity. So, this is something that's being done routinely in counties up north. A city will look at a property, say, "What's not being moved?" You know, and the reason that is, the reason the tax code has this provision, is because you don't want a property to sit there too long, and if one particular entity doesn't want to move the sale, it can't hold up the funds for the city, you know, or vice versa, because that happens in other jurisdictions where politically there may be some problems, and so one person wants to sell, the other one doesn't. So, the code says, "Hey, after six months, it's fair game. Whoever wants to sell it just has to pass a resolution, and the sheriff will immediately sell it, and it goes to the highest bidder, and you don't need any approval from anybody else." So, what we've done in Ithalo County to try to speed up the process and make it more advantageous for the investors who are really buying these properties, is we get the county to pass a resolution two months before the actual sale is going to be held, and then, once they pass that resolution, we distribute those properties, or the list of the properties the county's going to sell, to the cities and the schools within Ithalo County that have an interest in those properties, and we ask them, "If there's any reason why you don't want us to sell this property, let us know. Otherwise, on such, on such date, it's going to be sold." Because once it's sold on that day, that same day, the sheriffs will actually issue the sheriff's deed to whoever bought the property. So, now, instead of going through this process where you're waiting, if you're an investor and you're buying these properties, you have to wait three or four months before you know if you're ever going to get your property, then it takes several months to get your deed. This, this new way of doing it, of selling properties only through the resales allows investors to get their deed the day they actually pay for that property, the day of the sale. So, what we've seen in Ithalo County is that we've done that all this past year of two thousand eighteen, is we're selling our resale properties for a much higher amount than we ever have before. You know, we used to get traditionally about thirty-three percent of the property's value, now we're getting about sixty, seventy percent of the property's value, because the investor knows, "Hey, once I go to the tax sale, if I win the bid that day, I'm going to get my, my deed that day, and I can start building on the property, I can turn around and sell it and whatnot." So, you recover more money for the county, and it's a much faster process. And again, what we've done, you know, we don't want to use the process to try to, to try to, you know, take away the city's and the school's right to have a say-so. So, what we do is we get the county to pass a resolution at least two months in advance, and then we provide that list to all the other taxing entities and say, "Hey, for some reason, you don't want to sell it, because, you know, the city wants to build a park, the school wants to, you know, extend their playground, by all means, they can ask us to pull it, and we'll pull it before we actually sell it." So, we're trying to get ahead of the game instead of doing it behind.
Let's assume that happens. The school, the city, the county, whoever wants that particular property, can, can it be pulled for that entity so that they can keep it?
Absolutely.
Or would they have to bid on it also?
Two things can happen, you know, and we have that happen in, in, in other entities. If, if a particular entity wants to buy it, we can either pull it, and they can, and that's the only time we entertain private bids, and I've made that clear in, you know, in other cases. If, one, let's say in this particular case, the city of Roma wants to buy a property because they want to build a park on there, they can either offer a token bid, you know, we're doing that in admission right now, and they'll offer like a thousand dollars to all the taxing entities, and, you know, so it's not a lot of money, but it's because you have to have an actual offer and the acceptance by the other taxing entities, or you can put, or they can actually show up at the tax sale if they don't want to wait for the approval of all the other entities. Many times, they show up at the actual tax resale, and they'll make their own, you know, offer, but they've got to pay for it like anybody else would. So, the, this, under the new system, Judge, if they, if the city of Roma wants a particular, let's say you approve the sale of a lot in the city of Roma, and you're going to move forward with it, the city will have two months to look at that property and decide whether or not they want that property pulled, and they can pull it, and then they can negotiate with the county and the school of whether they want to buy it privately, or whether they want to go back and buy it at a tax sale. But by no means are you going to be taking away everyone's right to have a say-so when it gets sold, because they're, they're still going to have two months to look at that property to decide whether or not they want it sold at a tax sale. But again, I'll bring that back, that's something for a future date, and I really, I just wanted to put that out there with y'all, and let you know that we've been doing it in Ithalo County with a lot of success this year, and if it's something that this county wants to entertain, by the time we, we'll have another resale probably in June of two thousand nineteen, so we'll have about six, seven months to gear up for that one, and then I'll come back at a future meeting and let you, and ask y'all if this is what y'all want to do, and then we'll prepare a resolution, and you'll take action at that particular time. And then, but in the meantime, if you have any questions, just call me, and I'll answer those questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge Commissioner.
Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time? Do we? Yeah. Okay, if not, we'll, we'll go back to our regular agenda, and that's our reports. Gas Department?
Morning, Judge, Commissioner. My report is in your package. The only thing I'd like to elaborate on is the last part of the report. We're under mandate by Railroad Commission to replace two sections of steel pipe on our system, and I've offered a specification sheet to the two local contractors. As of last week, they hadn't come in. They haven't come in yet? I've talked to them, I talked to Raina last week, and they hadn't come in. I talked to them Friday, no, Thursday, and so I'm hoping that this, this week, they'll, they'll be here.
Did we advertise in the paper for that?
Do what?
The best thing would be to place it in the newspaper.
That was going to be my...
It wouldn't be a fair thing. I think, by all means, it needs to be sent to the newspaper, payback.
It's, it's on your desk. Okay? Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. President. Transfer station?
Good morning, Commissioner. Judge.
Good morning.
My report is there on the desk. Only thing I have to add is that, like I said, previous meeting, our COG was awarded us the money, but TDQ has not finalized the approval. Once TDQ approves the money, the releasing of the money, we'll be getting it in order, we'll get the, go ahead to purchase the car, the car. So, that's all we're waiting on, on TDQ approval. I want to thank Commissioner Alvarez also, because the past month, I think there were twice his grader was around the area, and both times, they graded the road leading up to the transfer station, making it easier for, for the big trucks and everything. So, thank you, Commissioner.
I'm glad you're my witness, because somebody over there in one of the ranches, he thinks I never go over there.
The past month, your grader was over there two times, and both times, they graded all the way up to the transfer station and further out.
Also, I think it was you, Commissioner, that patched the parking light in the back of the corner. By the way, we have another spot.
Yeah, as soon as the sun comes up, we'll do it with hot mix.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I don't know if you have any other questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. President. Taxes Caesar, Ms. Alina?
Good morning, Commissioners. My first report, I will give you the recap on the twenty seventeen and eighteen to conclude the year. For entity county and, you have your reports in front of you. For entity county, MNO current collections were nine million and eight thousand, seven hundred and seventeen and forty-four cents. hundred and seventeen and forty-four cents. Delinquent collections were two million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and one with sixty-five cents. The total collections were eleven million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and nineteen with nine cents. For entity county, county road and bridge, current collections were three million, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-two with forty-nine cents. Delinquent collections were nine hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three and sixty-nine cents. Total collections were four, four million, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-six with fourteen cents. For entity county, INS current collections were two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-three with forty cents. And delinquent collections were one hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-three with twenty-two cents. The total collections for that entity were three hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and six with sixty-two cents. For entity county drainage district, current collections were two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven with three cents. Delinquent collections for that entity were forty thousand, eighty-seven with eight cents. The total collections were two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred, fifty-four with eleven cents. The total, the total for the county, for the four county entities are as follows. Current collections were thirteen million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-two cents. Total delinquent is three million, three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and forty with six, with sixty-four cents. I'm sorry. The grand total is sixteen million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five with ninety-six cents. This does not include the attorney's fees. This is my, my report from 2017, 18 to close the year. This is the report for October 2018. The total countywide collections for all entities not including attorney's fees for October 2017 were five million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, twenty-five and fifty-two cents. In October 2018, there were four million, eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-six cents, and thirty-six and four cents. I'm sorry, thirty-four cents. There was a difference of one million, seven hundred and two thousand, four hundred and ninety-four with eighty-eight cents less than last year. The total, the total for our Starr County current collections, including Starr County entities, in October 2017 were three million, four hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine and fifty-five cents. In October of 2018, there were two million, three hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four with seventy-four cents. There was a difference of one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-four and eighty-one cents less than last year. The total county, the total Starr County delinquent collections, not including attorney's fees for October 2017, were one hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine and four cents. In October 2018, there were two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four with forty-four cents. There was a delinquent of forty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-five and forty cents more than last year. As of October 31st, 2018, the tax office has collected seventeen percent of the projected collections. The projected 2018 collections remain in our eleven million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven with twenty-six cents. Out of the thirteen million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred, eight hundred and two with sixty, or sixty percent of the collection. That is my report for the, an overall and for the month of October. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Those are a lot of numbers.
I know. Well, the collections have been good. No more questions? Thank you.
County Clerk, Ms. Ronzeldis?
Judge, my report is in the package. If you all have any questions.
A little numbers. Have you done this? I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ronzeldis. Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner.
Good morning, Judge.
Report for revenues for the month of, projected revenues for the month of October 2018. Combination between Iguodala County, which is forty-six thousand, sixty-two dollars, and the Marshal Services, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, fifty-two dollars. And the other police agencies and secures comes out to a grand total of two hundred and forty-four thousand, ninety-four dollars. The average count for, the average federal inmate count was one hundred and eighteen for October. The total count for November the 5th was one hundred and twenty-five inmates, federal inmates, and one hundred and one county inmates, which on those one hundred and one also include the Iguodala inmates for two twenty-six.
In the, in the hundred and one, we have...
The forty, the thirty inmates for Iguodala.
Iguodala. Could you break those up?
I should, I should record next time.
Okay.
So that should be more or less our state count, that we're housing for local inmates would be around seventy, more or less, which fluctuates daily. And the difference between October 2017, October 2018 is an additional eighteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars.
So it's more for eighteen?
Yes, sir.
Because it's in red, red.
Yeah.
Maybe in green, what?
Green, something another color. But yes, I will, I will break it down for next report.
Yeah, because it makes you look like Victor, somebody not doing their job.
No, it's doing real good. The DA's office and the county attorney are doing great.
But you got, you got a whole bunch from there.
Yes, sir. So currently, right now, today, I believe this morning, we're at one hundred and eleven with the Marshal Services. There should be thirty new arrests en route to date.
Yeah, let me, let me commend you, Captain, on the job at the jail. It was in the media, but for those that did not hear, we did have a jail visit a few weeks ago, week or so ago.
Correct.
And the lady that came down was extremely thorough. And in fact, Starr County was one of the very few jails that passed on the first try. So congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it.
For the work that you all do.
Thank you.
Any, any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
International Bridge?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is the report for October 2018. And the total for revenue is two hundred and thirteen thousand, eleven dollars with fifty cents. We show a decrease of eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-three for the month of October 2018 compared to the month of October 2017. And we show an increase of four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine with fifty cents on collections for the month of October 2018 compared to the month of September 2018. And we have other collections of six hundred and ninety-five dollars with seventy-six cents. And the grand total for the month of October 2018 is two hundred and thirteen dollars, seven hundred and seven with twenty-six cents. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, colleagues?
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is our report for the month ending September 2018. The general fund had six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, being four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars more than at the same time last year. For the road and bridge, the fund had a hundred and thirty-six thousand, being a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars more than at the same time last year. The total cash amount of, in bank and investment accounts in the custody of the county treasurer as of the end of this period covered by this report is eleven point one million dollars. His overall, overall amount is one point eight million dollars more than at the same time last year. We continue to monitor our depository accounts to ensure their safety. The combined debt, the county, city of Roma account is currently past due by over one point three million dollars. Combined debt for Starr County was four point one million, being three hundred thousand dollars less than at the same time last year. The county's amounts in deposits were well collateralized at a hundred and forty-seven percent. This pledge level is forty-seven percent above the LCG Chapter 2257.022 requirements, forty-two percent above our contract terms with Lone Star National Bank. The 2018 budget included the borrowing of a one million tax anticipation note, but it did not go through or was not necessary. Cash is very low and most vendors are on payment hold. Any questions?
No more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Auditor, Mr. Carter?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I have my report for the month of October 2018. Roman numeral one, our cash balances, the, as of October 31st, the cash available in the general fund was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars and eighty cents. In the road and bridge fund, the cash available was one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty cents. And in the payroll clearing fund, the cash available was three hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Roman numeral two, letter A, the general fund expenditure report, for the entire, for the entire general fund, the percent expended for the month of October was seven point six nine percent. And that's compared to the percent of year elapsed of eight point five percent, which is thirty-one days divided by three hundred and sixty-five days. Now, within that general fund are the following departments. The county judge department has expended six point seven nine percent. The county clerk has expended seven point eight three percent. On page two, the human resources department has expended seven point three nine percent. The planning department is at seven point four three percent. Federal and state programs department is at seven point nine nine percent. The countywide general fund is at seven point seven nine percent. The county court at law is at six point nine six percent. The 229th District Court is at five point one three percent. The 381st District Court is at six point zero eight percent. The district clerk is, office is at seven point one seven percent. The county attorney's office is at eight point four eight percent. The district attorney's office is at six point five percent. The county auditor's office is at seven point five zero percent. The county treasurer's office is at seven point six two percent. The tax assessor collector's office is at seven point nine seven percent. The building maintenance department is at six point two nine percent. The detention center is at eight point seven seven percent. The juvenile detention center is at six point eight six percent. The sheriff's department is at seven point one two percent. The agricultural extension service is at six point one percent. The nutrition programs of all four precincts combined is at ten point four eight percent. And the elections administrator's office was at eleven point two six percent. And in Roman numeral three, letter A gives a summary of the entire road and bridge fund expenditure report for the month of October. It has expended eleven point three three percent of its budget for the year. And then, within that, within that overall number, precinct one has expended sixteen point two two percent. Precinct two has expended fifteen point zero two percent. Precinct three has expended fourteen point one seven percent. And precinct number four is at ten point four two percent. And the countywide road and bridge fund is at two point nine eight percent. In the middle of page five is a summary of the revenue reports for the month of October, again, compared to the percent of year elapsed of eight point five percent. Current taxes are at two point nine nine percent. Fees of office are at point two percent. State salary supplements are at twenty-three point six one percent. Department of Family Services grant is at forty-two point two six percent. International bridge transfers are at eleven point seven seven percent. Building permits are at seven point five four percent. And the general fund as a whole is at two point five nine percent. Page six, the road and bridge fund revenue, current taxes are at six point two seven percent. Vehicle weight fees are at sixty-six point three six percent. The, I think I may have a typographical error there on the wind power, Real Bravo Wind Power Payment and Lure Taxes program. It shows eighty thousand dollars collected and that may be a holdover from last, from my last report. I'm not sure.
I think, I think the eighty thousand is a budgeted. Nothing has been collected yet.
That's what I think.
Yet it shows a hundred percent received.
I think that line is a typographical error. Please ignore that. The total road and bridge fund is at five point three two percent collected compared to budget. Starting at the top of page seven is a summary of our enterprise funds. Bridge tolls, did not report any collections for the month of October and did not report, and reported two hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars of expenditures, which is nine point three seven percent of their annual budget. The gas operating system also did not report any revenues for the month of October. Expenditures were five point six five percent of the budget. And the solid waste transfer station revenues were four point four eight percent and expenditures were eleven point seven nine percent. On page eight is a summary of the debt owed by Starr County. There's still some detailed information pending. And we are in the process of, we're in the process of paying off the second line item, the Certificate of Obligation 2004. The lender is US Bank. The current outstanding balance is five hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. And that includes the interest. The principal balance is five hundred and twenty-five thousand even and the remainder of that is the, is the interest that's owed. And we anticipate that that will be paid off in the month of December. All of the other items there are, have been on for some time except, except the last two. Those are new equipment purchases, which we're still pending some information on, on the details. But those purchase orders are getting, are getting reviewed to go through the system. So the total debt owed as of October 31st is three billion, fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Mr. Carter, were you able to find out if we could use some of the INS to pay the 2014A note series?
Yes, we can.
We can?
Yes.
Maybe we should pay both of them off? The 2004 and 2014? If we can.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
That's, that is, that is not in the budget, but I know of no reason why the Commissioners' Court couldn't authorize it to be done.
That's the one where we pay an annual amount to Lone Star Bank for eighty-one thousand dollars a month. We still owe two hundred and thirty-six thousand, but we have more than that in INS surplus that we can pay it off and, and use some of that surplus and get rid of all our debt as far as, to the notes.
If it can be done, let's do it.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we need to work on that for our next Commissioners' Court meeting, see if we can pay both of them off.
I'll do that, Your Honor. At the bottom of, at the bottom of page eight is a summary of the interest and sinking fund. As of 10/31, it had a balance of nine hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. So there's a surplus of four hundred and forty-three dollars, four hundred and forty-three thousand, five oh six. But that is compared only to the Certificate of Obligation 2004. If we get, if we get a favorable ruling, which I anticipate we would, to pay off, to also apply that to the series 2014A debt, we'd still have, we'd still have a surplus On page nine, there are no... On page nine, there are no unpaid invoices being held by the auditor's office, and there's only been one revenue certification, and that was eighteen thousand eight hundred in the records management and preservation fund for the district clerk's office. Any questions?
One, one question, Mr. Carter. On, on page six, the second line from the top, financing note payable, we still have that million dollars that Fernando had in there. Why, why is that in there? It's not in the budget.
Yes, sir, it is in the budget.
I trust it got you.
But we didn't borrow it.
Oh, 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 this is last year. I'm, I'm thinking about this current year.
Yeah, that, that is a summary, that is a summary of the budgeted revenue.
Okay.
The amount received on the far left column, the amount received is zero.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any other question?
Mr. Carter, where are you at with the audit? How, when is it to be done?
We are working very closely with the CPA firm. We communicate with them daily, deliver information to us and to them, and they ask questions, and we respond to the questions, and the only, we're down, we're down to the wire. In fact, I expect to have the final, the final fund reconciliations delivered to the auditors this week.
This week?
Yes, sir.
The final?
They've already, they, but they already have everything except the payroll clearing fund and the general fund, and we're getting those two done this week.
Judge, where are we at with the, with the grant? Have we got an, approved the extension to?
Which grant?
Well, we can, we can get, we can't apply for the rental rent because the budget's not ready. We, we asked for the extension. Did we get it approved, Mr. Carter?
No, it was not approved. The, the grants are on, all of the, all of the grants on the e-grant system are on vendor hold right now, and that hold will not be released until we get, until we deliver the audit to them, to the Office of Governor.
The one where we had asked for the extension, Commissioner?
The one in the Arroyo?
HR, yeah, I don't see them here, but they, they went to my office last week, the other one in the Arroyo. We, we're still hoping we can get it, that there's still a possibility, a good possibility that we'll get the extension. However, I instructed the, the ladies to go ahead and start working on a closeout, because we certainly don't want to pay money that we've already used. So that's just a plan B. If for some reason it does not get approved, then we'll, we'll have to shut it down, and we, we won't return money that we've already used to, to buy properties and so forth. Will we get it approved? I'm sure and hoping, you know, and, and like I said, I think there's, there's a good chance that we will, but it's not a hundred percent.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm asking about the future grants that we?
Okay, the, the CIBG money, which is the one where, that you all use for paving and stuff like that, we're, we're, we're getting real close to the deadline. I don't know what the deadline is, but if, if the audits are not completed by a certain time, then we're not allowed to submit.
That's what I'm asking.
And, and we're getting real close to that deadline. So we're, you know, we're right there.
Well, you have to wait and see.
And the others are on hold, you know?
Yeah, I understand. They can't get money because of the audit.
I am, on the, on all the grants that are on the e-grant system, I am communicating with Office of the Governor, the grant managers in Austin, daily. And we've reached an agreement where we are continuing to provide the monthly expenditure reports. We're submitting our, we're submitting our request, but, so they can, so they can not, so they can keep up with their review process. And hopefully, as soon as our audit is approved, then they'll go ahead and take off the hold and be able to, be able to catch up with our funding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Under my report I just had about the jail, but I've already reported that, so we'll go on to our regular agenda. Vendor's list, Mr. Carter?
There are forty vendors in the list, Commissioner, Your Honor, involved in reviews. Review is a complete, a long, a long, a long.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, done it. Item eight is to discuss and approve the November sixth general election workers.
This is, this is for electionee runners.
So, so I guess what you want is for us to?
Approve so we can pay them.
To confirm the hiring of these people?
These were all the people that worked at the election?
Election day. They were last minute.
They had to be early after the election.
Yeah.
Someone backed down, somebody wanted to.
Yeah.
I second, Your Honor.
I have motion in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is to accept lease payment in the amount of a thousand dollars for the Nutrition Department, precinct four.
So he's not here, we divide him by three. I move it way forward.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten was also placed by Commissioner Sines, and this is to approve application for driveway permits for Lopez Circle Attachments A through F.
I'm definitely going to close the, I move it way forward.
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven is an action item to open a new account at Lone Star National Bank named Dagus, Dag, US Treasury by Mr. Escobar.
We won't need it, but there we can table this one.
I move it way forward, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to table, you, you're not going to need it at all?
No, no, they're all just as funds as they are right now, so we're going to need some of it.
Okay. Okay, rather than table, you want to just?
No, actually, yeah.
Because if we table, we need to bring it back up.
Yeah, no, you can.
I move it way forward, Your Honor.
Okay, so no, no action needed. Item fourteen is an action item, and this to approve a contract between Star County and Gustavo Anquen, Gomez Commission.
Yes, Your Honor. Mr. Gomez will be hired under Star County Bridge for promotion and exercises. Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion.
What is he going to do, Your Honor?
We're going to hire him for the Star County Bridge, for promotion and exercise, to promote our bridge, by the look of him.
Yeah, to, to promote more usage of our bridge.
Yeah. We need more people passing through our bridge than going to Rio or somewhere else.
And Mr. Gomez will be effective in that?
Yeah, I guess so.
He's, he's. I hope we're not trying to, to save a failing newspaper owner. I will not.
I don't think that's a problem, Mr. Gomez.
No, you know, the, you know, I'm, I like the idea because he does have a lot of communication with the?
Mexican authorities also, Carretera Cincuenta y Cuatro being the shortest route to Monterrey.
Yeah.
That's why we want to use him.
The presidentes municipales, he covers them pretty well. I, I do have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will move, Your Honor.
Okay, one, one opposed, Commissioner. Item fifteen is an action item, and this to transfer the supervision of compliance and collections from the clerk's office to, to my office. The, the reason that I'm asking for this is that we've been having a little bit of an issue with some of our JPs as far as reporting on a timely manner, so I want, want the new JPs come in, I want to be able to?
I shall move, Your Honor.
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen is also an action item, and this is to amend the model rules and regulations for Star County. If you all recall, I, I presented this sometime back, month or so ago, asking that we amend them from ten acres, increasing to twenty acres. Since then, it's been a legal issue, I guess, going back and forth as to whether the court has the right to do that or not. You know, and, and there's a letter in, in the packet from one of our attorneys. By the way, what, what happened was, I contacted different attorneys as to whether this was legal or not. Two of the three said that it's not, and then the, the parties were threatening to sue already, and, well, I wanted to have a, a reasonable chance of winning before we spend any taxpayers' money on litigation, and, and two of them, I mean, one was TAC, said that there's no way, and, and I'll try and explain, and Mr. Escobar, correct me if I get myself in a bind, but the, the difference was, the, the minimum rules, the minimum standards for the subdivision, which is what I was hanging my hat on, that was an administrative order by the Water Development Board when they passed the, the model rules and regulation, the minimum standards. The state comes in later, and they pass a statute which trumps administrative order saying it's ten acres. There's no minimum standard, there's nothing, it's just ten acres. So they felt that if we go to court, that is going to trump Water Development Board administrative order, and we're going to lose. For that reason, you know, I'm asking that, that we go back to the ten acres and see if we can introduce legislation or something if, if we really want to go to the twenty acres, because right now, it doesn't look like we're, we have a chance of winning.
I think so, move, Your Honor.
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, and that is to change, everything remains the same, it's just the, the acreage from twenty to ten.
So we're going back to normal.
Back to the way it was, yeah. Any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eighteen is an action item, and this to approve the budget for Star County Precinct Two Memorial Cemetery.
Yes, Your Honor, we established a new budget for our memorial cemetery, because we didn't have one, so a motion to approve, Your Honor.
I'm going to move it forward.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen is also an action item, oh, well, this are budget amendments. Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven are budget amendments. Mr. Carter, are they in order?
Mr. Carter, the budget amendments, the long term, you, the long term?
I move it way forward, budget amendment, Your Honor.
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is eleven oh five, and pursuant to section five-five, one point oh seven four, we will go into executive session to discuss order of salaries, and section five-five, one point oh seven one, we'll go into executive session for consulting with attorneys for drainage. It's twelve o'clock, and we're back in, in open session. Under order of salaries, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-nine was informational only, so no action needed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
I second.
Moved in second, all in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.